And welcome to the August 13th meeting of the Pinehurst Village Council. We are very glad to have you here this evening. And we will start by having our invocation. We have a preacher with shorts on. It's summer, it's summer. This is Pastor John Kenyon with Redeemer Church. And after the pastor's invocation, we will be saying the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all stand.
But before I do this, I happened to research a reliable source called Wikipedia. An invocation is an action of invoking something or someone for assistance or as in authorities. That's what an invocation is. So let's do that now. Father in heaven, we give you thanks for the opportunity we have to gather. We thank you for the opportunity we have to govern. We have the freedoms and our democracy to select our officials that represent us and represent us well. But we are creatures and we know the present. We, wow, we often forget the past, but we've been there and we're unaware of what lies ahead. So Lord, we ask for your blessing. We ask for wisdom for the council members, the mayor, and others as they make decisions that impact all of us, for the betterment of the village of Pinehurst and the surrounding communities. Lord, we need your help, we need your guidance. I pray with all these discussion points and considerations that there would be a spirit of civility and the benefits of the shared experiences, wisdom, giftedness of each man and woman up here in front of us. May they share the, I know they share the common love for the village of Pinehurst. I pray that you would also give them a willingness and a desire to work together to achieve what any one of us alone could not. We thank you for that opportunity. And Lord, I also pray in this invocation, we have this wonderful event in Pinehurst right now with the amateur tournament, and I pray for the golfers. There are many of them who've come with great hopes. Some are disappointed, some are excited. Lord, give them perspective to remember that it's not whether you win or lose, but your character that stands the test of time. And Lord, I pray for that as well among all of us here as we make discussions and decisions and reflection and some of these decisions, we just don't know what's going to happen. But we entrust it to you, and that's why we take these few moments to invoke your presence and your guidance. In your name we pray. Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Kenyon, I don't know if I've ever heard a more relevant invocation. It was just beautiful. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. We have a very short agenda tonight, so you probably, I mean, we'll be out of here in 20 minutes. So you can, so you can stay if you like, but if you have other things. Okay, next item on our agenda, we have reports first from our manager. Jeff?
Okay, I've got three things I'd like to cover. The first is the council's been very busy the last couple of days, spending a considerable amount of time interviewing potential consultant partners to do our library needs assessment for the future. They interviewed four firms over the last two days. Those firms were a firm called Godfrey &amp; Godfrey, Ratio, Shepherd &amp; Shepherd, and Library IQ. After the last interview this afternoon, they stayed convened and had a brief discussion about decision-making. They have not made a decision yet. We're going to go back and ask for some further clarification to help them make that decision and hope to set them up to make that decision very quickly. The second two points I'd like to make are regarding development in and around the village. Of course, there is continued interest in the progress on the Community Presbyterian Church site. I can report that progress is still moving along. We have, I think, a fully synced-up set of plans now in the, in the planning department, and staff is reviewing that. I approved a recombination of plots that was required today to move that project forward as well. So it is a long process. We apologize for that, but we are continuing to move in the right direction on that. The third is, and I think I commented on this, this project at the last meeting, but we do now have a formal submission on the cancer center from the hospital. And again, this is, this is the site that lies directly across Page from the heart center, and the plan calls for a four-story cancer center, a four-story parking garage, and a pretty substantial parking lot to the rear of those two structures. It will require a rezoning to the hospital district. I think it's also a conditional district, if I recall correctly. A couple of specific things that Darren can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the things they're asking for is the ability to put solar panels on top of the parking structure, and there's another potential requirement to, or request to allow for setbacks that are a little bit smaller than otherwise would be allowed in the hospital district in order to fit all that on the site. So those are the three things I wanted to comment on. That concludes my.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Kevin?
I have no report except the public is getting their money's worth the past two days. We've been meeting for two days straight. So I just want to report that.
Thank you. Mr. Baldry?
Nothing, Matt. Thank you.
Matt?
No, nothing at this time.
Late breaking news, if you haven't been out to the U.S. Amateur, because of the pending weather tomorrow, we're going to move up the playtime starting at 8:00 instead of 10:00. And I have an afternoon shift, so I hope it's come and gone by the time I start. Anyway, but do take an opportunity to get out there. There's some really terrific golfers that we're going to be watching on TV for a long time to come, and they'll be making history here in Pinehurst.
Thank you, Judy. I have no comments, so we will go right to our item number four, which is our consent agenda, and all these items can be approved under one motion.
I move to approve all items listed and considered routine on the consent agenda.
Second?
We have a motion by Kevin Drum and a second by Jack Farrell. Is there any discussion? If not, let's vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Thank you very much, everyone. That's unanimous, Beth. Next, number five, and that's probably Mark Wagner. Here he comes. Oh.
Oh.
We didn't turn the TVs on? Yeah. Thank you, Tom, for mentioning that. Okay, Mark.
Come on. It's good, okay. Is that my intro?
Not yet.
Oh, sorry.
Sit there, you can sit there. I think everybody knows David Michael Wolf.
Yes, David Michael Wolf is here with us tonight. He's the star of the show. I'm just the opening act.
He's the star.
We received a request from David Michael Wolf and his staff with Carolina Philharmonic. They have reserved the Fair Barn September 13th and 14th for a gala event to celebrate their 10th anniversary, I believe, and they are requesting either waiving or reducing the fees at the Fair Barn for this event. This would fall under category C of our sponsorship policy since they are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so this is up for consideration for you tonight, with it being two days of rent, that is at the nonprofit rate of $1,000 per night, plus their additional fees for tables, chairs, the stage. All told, I believe our estimates, unless they've changed from what y'all have given to Holly at the Fair Barn, they're anticipating a little over 200 people right now. So the total use for this would be about $3,000 is what we're estimating right now would be the total reduction, should you do a full waiver of all the fees for the event. The only thing that, they've obviously already paid their deposit. We do always get the cleaning fee even if there is a waiver of all other fees. So otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to David at this point if he wants to give you a little more information about the event so that you can consider their request.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. So I'm David Michael Wolf with Carolina Philharmonic, and I've been working with the village of Pinehurst for a little over 10 years now, but I haven't been before at the village council, probably for nine years, and.
We've missed you.
You haven't changed, you haven't changed a bit? Your hair is the same color?
You haven't changed a bit either, John.
Bring the orchestra up next time.
I want to keep it brief because I know you have a big agenda. I just, I'm full of gratitude that I'm still here and the orchestra is still here after, after 10 years. We've been working with Parks and Rec for almost as long. Thank you for your support. The gala we're having is our annual fundraiser for music education. The goal of the Carolina Philharmonic, you may know that we present concerts throughout the year that, to entertain, and we've done some joint events with the village of Pinehurst. Mayor Nancy has been, has been of great assistance with our outdoor Philharmonic concerts if you've been. But our primary goal with the orchestra is music education. The very first year, I wasn't sure how it's going to go about it. We served about 25 local kids in Moore County. The second year, we served 50 kids. The third year, we doubled it again to 100. After that, Carnegie Hall reached out to us and asked if we would bring the programs for Carnegie Hall, the children in New York City, to North Carolina and be the first orchestra in North Carolina to serve, to bring their programs to North Carolina. And so we did that with their link-up program for the programs that they have for grades three through five, and we went from serving 100 kids in Moore County to 1,100 the next year. And the following year, we jumped from, we increased our, the number of kids in Moore County that we serve from 1,100 to about 3,500, and all in over the past 10 years. And what we're celebrating at this gala for music education is having served over 14,000 Moore County children over the past 10 years, and most of these kids have been through our programs two, three, or even four times. We reach all of the first graders, all the second graders, all the fourth graders in Moore County public schools every single year. And so we, we work with the music teachers, we, they incorporate the curriculum from Carnegie Hall and our own curriculum for Encore Kids Program for the K-32 program into their music courses. We also work with the art program and the art teachers so that they're able, the kids are able to create works of art inspired that the music that they're going to perform. And so it's not a meet-the-orchester concert so much that it's the culminating event, but it's, it's more of a become-the-orchester concert. So we'll bring in 1,000 kids at a time, bust them in from Oliver, Moore County, and to Roberting the Auditorium in the spring, and we create orchestras of over 1,000 at a time. All the fourth graders receive a free parapole recorder, which is the high-end recorder instrument that rarely squeaks, which is, which is what the teachers love, and that's a gift for them that they get to keep. So we donate over 1,000 recorders to Moore County schools every year. And we also have a junior orchestra program that serves about 100 kids. We've been working actually in this very room with the junior orchestra for many years. I used to teach myself, teach the junior orchestra myself when this was kind of brand, I think this room was brand new, and we would come here every week and set up music stands. But anyway, so this is what we, this is what the gala is for, is a gala for music education. It's, we serve lots and lots of kids every year in Pinehurst, which is our home, and we have our office right a couple of doors down from Dugan's, been in the village of Pinehurst, our box office. Pinehurst is the reason I came to, to North Carolina from New York, and I'm just really blessed to, you know, live in this place, and I appreciate all your support. Anything you can do for us would be, and for the kids would be very appreciated.
So David, let me just get this straight. There are two days that you're asking for, and you're going to have kids come one day? Or you're just going to have your regular fundraiser?
So it's, first day is just set up, second day we'll have the event. We will have members of our junior orchestra performing, but it's like a gala fundraising event on the second day. So the first day is just set up.
Great. Okay.
I just would offer this. When the junior orchestra links up, you need a bigger stage. Because it's amazing how you can pack as many youngsters in with the full, with your full Philharmonic. It's just amazing how many children come.
So each year, we, at the end, usually in our May finale concert, either at the high school or Owens Auditorium, we're looking forward to having our new home base at the Bradshaw Performing Arts Center. Well, November 8th is opening night. We'll have, the college has given us November 8th and 9th to have a kind of a double opening event with the Philharmonic. At the end of our season, and we will do this this season too, that John's referencing, we bring a lot of our junior orchestra kids. Sometimes we'll have 50, 60, 70 kids performing side by side with the Carolina Philharmonic using every square inch of the stage, whatever stage we're on. And we'll do, we'll do like "Ode to Joy," the finale Beethoven Symphony with the original orchestration. It's really quite something to see kids, some who have been playing for many, many years, but other kids who have just picked up their violin six, six months earlier, and at the end of six months, they're able to play "Ode to Joy" on the violin, six, seven, eight years old, eight-year-old kids with professional symphony orchestra. And these are all your local kids. So if you walk around anywhere in, in Moore County and you see a kid on the sidewalk, chances are they're in our programs right now, or they will have been last year or next year. So we're really reaching just about every child in the grade school level in Moore County.
David, I remember very well when my husband, who is hard of hearing, if anybody knows him, wanted to play the violin. And he got a violin, he got a teacher, and, but all he could do was ee, 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 ee. And I said to David, "Do you think his hearing problem could have anything to do with it?" And David said, "You need to, why don't you try to get a soundproof room?" And I said, "Would that help him?" And he said, "No, but it'll help you." David is many things. Not only is he an excellent musician, he has quite the sense of humor, and he is so personable. I think so many people in our community know you and care about you, David, and care about the Carolina Philharmonic.
The only thing I would, only thing I would add is you need to work on your golf game. So when we have your, when you have your golf event, you're there at the beginning and you're at the end, but we never see you out on the course.
That's okay, David. They never see me either. Okay, we'll talk. Any comments about the sponsorship? I think we have been giving them the benefit of being a 501(c)(3) and donating the Fair Barn to them for years, and I certainly would like to see that continue. Judy?
I move to approve the sponsorship request for use of the Fair Barn on September 13th and 14th, 2019, for Carolina Philharmonic's 10th anniversary event.
I'm pleased to second that motion.
We have a motion by Judy Davis, and we have John Baldry, who is pleased to second it. And is there any discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say no. That is unanimous. Thank you, David. We're looking forward to a wonderful event.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Not yet? But I hid that violin, I'll tell you. That violin isn't around anymore. Thank you. Okay, next we have a special intensity allocation. Darren?
Thank you. What council has before tonight is a consideration of a special intensity allocation pursuant to section 8.3.
Are you speaking into a microphone?
What?
Are you speaking into a microphone?
I thought I was, yeah.
Can you hear him, Bronson? Bronson?
Bronson, can you hear me?
Bronson doesn't know.
Sorry, Darren, but, you know, I get looks from the audience like, "Who is he and what's he saying?" This is our new planning director. He's been around for a while now.
A little over two months. All right, consideration what council has tonight, before tonight. Can I have a lapel mic? Consideration of a special intensity allocation pursuant to section 8.3 of the Pinehurst Development Orange to allow for development of a 40-unit townhome project on a 6.95-acre parcel of land that was recently annexed to the village of Pinehurst, generally located on the village's west side between Linden and Foxfire Roads. If you recall, this was the subject of a recent annexation and a general concept plan that council approved, and here's, here's the property. Basically, what we're doing is requesting an allocation, a special intensity allocation of 6.95 acres within the WS2 Droning Creek-Lumber River watershed. The proposed impervious area on the subject site is approximately 100,000 square feet or 30,000, or 30% of the, of the deeded acreage. If this special intensity allocation is approved for the LaFerrate Townhome development, that would leave a remaining 757 acres, 757.137 acres left in the WS2 watershed. Staff, after looking at the proposal, staff, staff is recommending approval of the SIA, which council can approve by, by motion.
Thank you, Darren. Are there any questions for Darren? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Since we, we approve this based on this, I move to approve the proposed special intensity allocation as outlined in the staff memorandum dated August 8, 2019, for the proposed 40-unit LaFerrate Townhome development located on the village's west side between Linden Road and Foxfire Road. If development approval shall expire, this SIA shall be rescinded and the allotted allocation shall be returned to the pool for future allocation.
Second?
We have a motion by Kevin Drum and a second by John Baldry. Is there any further discussion? If not, let's vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Thank you very much. That's unanimous, Beth. Thank you. Darren, you're up next, too. There are yes.
This is another special, this is another special intensity allocation. Let me pull it up. This is a request for special, special intensity allocation at 5 Trotter Hills Circle, known as the Pinehurst Coin Exchange. This is another one in the WS2 Droning, Droning Creek-Lumber River watershed. It's an approximate allocation of 1.44 acres. Let me pull up the map quick. So you can see the subject property. It's on the south side of the community, just off Highway 5 at the corner of Trotter Hills, Trotter Hills and Highway 5. What this is, is for the development of a new 10,553-square-foot office building. The proposed impervious area for this is about, is approximately 0.63 acres or approximately 43, 43% of that 1.44 acres. The proposed project involves a 1.44-acre tract of land with a development proposed totaling 19,000 square feet of impervious area, which is, which is parking lots, sidewalks, things like that. If this allocation is approved by council, that would leave a remaining 7.55, 755 acres, almost 756 acres of SIA allocation left. Village staff has reviewed the request and is recommending approval of the SIA as proposed, which council can approve by motion.
Okay, any questions for Darren? This is a good place to go sell your old gold. No questions? Are we ready for a motion?
I move to approve the special intensity allocation, this proposal, special, specialty, special intensity allocation as outlined in the staff memorandum dated August 8, 2019, for the proposed Pinehurst Corn Exchange Building located at 5 Trotter Hills Circle. If development approval shall expire, this SIA shall be rescinded and the allocated allocation shall be returned to the pool for future allocation.
Second? We have a motion by Jack Farrell and a second by Judy Davis. Is there any additional discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Thank you, that's unanimous. Thank you, Darren. Okay, next.
Mike, you're up. Good afternoon. I'm here to talk about bids that we received for our annual resurfacing contract. So on July 2, 2019, we received three bids here at Village Hall for the FY 2020 Road Resurfacing Contract. The three contractors that submitted bids are the same three contractors, I believe, that submitted bids last year and are kind of our typical contractors that submit on this contract, Riley Paving, Barn Hill Contracting, and Hudson Paving. This bid was advertised in the pilot. It wasn't just limited to those three bidders. We did a formal advertisement in accordance with state bid laws in the pilot, but we received those, those three bids. All bidders, in my opinion, are qualified and able to perform the work. Based on the unit prices that were submitted and our estimated quantities for installation, the low bid was submitted by Riley Paving from Carthage in the amount of $657,306.25. Don't forget the quarter. A summary of the bid pricing was attached to the, to the agenda as well. This project will resurface approximately 3.11 miles of roadway, but the contract does allow us to extend that if we have funds available afterwards and if we so choose to do so. The roads that are included in that package are scattered throughout the village and were selected based on a review of our pavement condition survey that was completed by the Kircher Group, an engineering firm, last fall. The review and the selections of the specific roads that were done, were done via a committee that involved Jeff Sanborn, Jeff Batten, Ralph Bowen, Barbara Thompson, and myself. And basically what we did was we looked at, and each road has a specific rating, and we started at the bottom, and so these roads that are selected in this package are really some of the worst roads in the village that are in, that are in need of improvement. The project will be paid out of our FY 2020 approved Powell Bill budget, which is $1.1 million. So if you do the math, if we, if you choose to award this in the amount of $657,306.25, that will leave $442,693.75 left in that line on them, which we intend to use to restore road shoulders, which we always do after the resurfacing. We have to do any restriping, any, any lane markings, crosswalks, stop bars, things of that nature, which we will bid that at as well. And then we have some areas where we actually want to remove the road instead of just doing an overlay because of the poor condition of the road. We'll actually remove it, replace the subgrade with new stone, and then pave over that. From that point, any remaining funds, we can actually use to extend and resurface more roads, or we're certainly looking at the possibility of having someone install a slurry seal, which is an emulsion that's a less expensive option. It can actually get you about a five-year additional life expectancy on a road, so depending on how much money we have back after all of that, I would probably recommend doing that. We've identified about three miles of roadways in the village that are good candidates for slurry seals at this time, and we would hope to do that this year if, if funds are still available. I believe the request, I put in the request something similar to last year, which is asking that the manager be allowed to help, to negotiate the, any additional cost on this to an overall amount, not to exceed $900,000. That was the same amount last year that I believe was approved. I honestly don't think we'll get there with a $1.1 million budget and some of these other things that we have to do, but I'm asking for that same request that was approved last year.
Okay, any questions for Mike?
When do you think you'll begin this, if it's, once it's approved?
So we've reached out to Riley Paving. They have us on the schedule for October right now, to begin in October. Now, I will say, last year, my understanding is they were going to start in October, and that got delayed a few months, but we had a hurricane come through in September that sort of threw everything into, into chaos for a few months. But we're hopeful to start in October.
I'm very, I'm very pleased to hear that funds could be available for a slurry application. I can attest to that, how durable that, that application can be at a, at a much lower cost. Mike, I'm glad to hear that you're including that. Thanks.
Mike, how many total miles are in the village, village roads, not state roads?
We just submitted our Powell Bill certification. I believe it's 107, right around 107.
107 miles. And how does the number of miles, 3.11, that we're going to do this year compare with previous years?
I wasn't in this position. Jeff may be able to answer that, but I believe we did a. 3.89. Okay. So two years ago, it was paved three, slurry sealed three, and last year it was paved 3.89, but no slurry seal, correct? Okay.
Well, I mean, it takes a few years to get to all the roads, doesn't it?
Yep, definitely does.
Another point that I might bring up, of the $1.1 million budget, how much of that is Powell Bill money, and how much is additional monies that we put in?
I'm going to ask Brooke that, but I believe it's around half a million for Powell Bill.
Eighty thousand.
Four hundred and ninety-nine thousand in Powell Bill, and then the additional is money that the village puts into it.
I bring that up because some commu, Powell Bill money is money that is given back to us by the state based on the miles of roads that we have, and some communities, in fact, I would say many, many communities, use that Powell Bill money, pave as far as it'll go. We actually, more than double it. So we are doing all we can for roads here in Pinehurst, and just want to make sure that's noted.
Many communities, Powell Bill funding can be used for other things other than strictly resurfing, surfacing as long as it's road maintenance-related. Many communities do, do all of their resurfacing and a lot of their other associated road maintenance with that money and don't spend another dime.
Right, right. We're special.
It's an important issue to our citizens.
It is a very important issue for our citizens.
I move to authorize the mayor or her designate execute a contract with Riley Paving Incorporated for the FY 2020 annual road resurfacing project in the amount of $657,306.25, and request that the village manager is authorized to execute change orders to add additional miles to the original unit pricing with the overall annual amount not to exceed $900,000 in sum total.
I would second that.
We have a motion by John Baldry and a second by Kevin Drum. Is there any additional discussion? If not, let's vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. That's unanimous, Beth. Thank you, Mike. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item, I think, might be...
The owner's got a wrap-up of where we finished out the year on our strategic operating plan implementation.
All right. Lauren, welcome.
Thank you very much. Get it pulled up here. Okay, members of the village council, I am here to present the fiscal year 2019 Strategic Operating Plan update. The update covers the timeframe from July 1, 2018, to June 30 of 2019. And as for the public, the village council adopts a strategic operating plan which indicates the village's plans to achieve our vision and mission. We use a balanced scorecard approach here at the village, which integrates our strategic planning with our resource allocation. The fiscal year 2019 Strategic Operating Plan includes nine initiative action plans, or IAPs, as I'll often call them, and seven of them are scheduled to begin this fiscal year. So if you will turn in your packets to page three, let me scroll down to page three, you will see a color-coded overview of the IAPs and metrics at June 30 of 2019. As of June 30, from the seven IAPs scheduled to begin in 2019, one was completed in FY 19, three are in progress and on schedule, and three are in progress but not on schedule. The only IAP not completed in FY 19 as planned is the Planning and Inspections Improvements IAP, and this IAP was not completed as planned due to software implementation delays that we were all well aware of throughout the year, and also staff turnover within the department leading that initiative. So it will carry forward for completion in 2020, and we have that scheduled going forward. All of the other IAPs that we had listed are multi-year IAPs and are in progress, whether they're on schedule or not on schedule. They will continue on into 2020 as an IAP, a multi-year IAP, and I'll cover the details of those shortly. We also monitor metrics for each of our IAPs in order to track our effectiveness at accomplishing our targeted results. And as of June 30, the village projected performance for, achieved projected performance, excuse me, for three or 43% of those IAPs. The IAPs with metrics that did not achieve projected performance are associated with those multi-year IAP timelines. So at this time, staff anticipates the metrics of those improving as the implementation continues into FY 2020. So we will look in detail, if you will, let me zoom in on this, at the update for the IAPs at the end of the fiscal year. The first IAP is the Police Department Accreditation. This was to implement accreditation standards for law enforcement and achieve law enforcement accreditation through Kalia. This is proceeding into FY 2020. At the end of the fiscal year, though, we were in progress but not on schedule with this IAP. And let me take a step back so everybody understands. Each of our initiative action plans includes a task list, and that task list details out specific tasks that have to be accomplished in order to complete the project. Those tasks and deadlines are set and implemented and enforced by, and monitored by, staff. And so we make sure we keep our eye on those tasks to ensure that we are staying on schedule in order to accomplish the end result of the project. At the end of the fiscal year, the Police Department Kalia team continued working through the self-assessment process by incorporating standards into departmental policies. And at the end of Q4, the policies were 84% complete. We do anticipate those to be completed. They are actually all currently drafted and are under review by staff, but they should be completed with all reviews by the end of Q1 of 2020. We will then continue on after those are approved to the full self-assessment process in order to continue that IAP and have a mock onsite here, as well as our Kalia accreditors coming onsite within the December-January timeframe.
Let me jump in here, Lauren. Council may not recall or be aware of this, but when we originally pulled this IAP together, we envisioned it as being a two-year timeline. As we dug into this, into the requirements associated with this accreditation early last fiscal year, we began to convince ourselves that we could do it in one year instead of two, with a completion of, I guess it's October of this year. It's becoming more and more apparent that we may not make that timeline, but the end result will be, we would be going back to a two-year versus the one that we tried to pull off.
Thank you.
Moving along, you will see the Long Range Comprehensive Plan Update IAP next. As you all are aware of where we've been with this, we are in progress and on schedule at the end of the fiscal year with this. So the comp plan update project is in progress and on schedule at the end of Q4. The consultants completed scenario planning and delivered the draft comp plan that was presented to the public at the community open house in June. You'll see the metrics for this one. We did achieve our projected performance for this, actually exceeded it. We had a goal to have 5,400 participants who attended meetings or reviewed the information on Envision the Village, and we actually had almost 6,400 people participating. Great results there. Moving along, we have the Recreation and Cultural Facilities IAP, and we are in progress and on schedule for this IAP at the end of the fiscal year. As you all know, Cannon Park Community Center construction is progressing well and is on schedule, and in Q4, the playground at Rassie Wicker Park was renovated and completed in June. We fall a little bit short of our goal of 4,800 total number of participants in our athletic and recreation programs at the end of the fiscal year. I will say, our goal was 4,800. Our red flag is 4,200. So if we were looking at it as the red, yellow, green, we would be yellow. The way we do this report is, did we meet it or did we not for the IAP? So we did fall short a little bit there. We were tracking that throughout the year. We had a program with our children, the Healthy Kids Running Series that we have had here, hosted it here at the village over the past several years, dropped off this year, did not host it here in Pinehurst. So we knew that that would be a good 300, 400 probably children that would not be included in this participation rate. We were hoping it might even out with some other programming, but we did fall a little bit short from what we were hoping there.
Lauren, do you think on the community park center construction, there was a bit of delay due to weather in, I want to say, the January-Febuary timeframe, lots of rain. Is the schedule sort, I'm kind of back on track, because I know what Mark wanted to do was to have the facility open for basketball season, when basketball season started, and I think Mark, Mark walked out, but...
Jeff's probably got a good idea on that.
I bet Jeff has that answer.
Kimpy's coming up.
The contractors are telling us they are on, back on schedule. We still have suspicion that we're a little bit behind, but their timeline is showing us on schedule to open later part of October.
Every day, when I drive by, I look there and I see it's, it's coming along famously, and their parking's going in, and the facilities, the facility's looking great.
Yeah, they're making good progress, and as you mentioned, we did fall behind in the winter months, but they felt like they could make it up. They've indicated they have made it up. We'll know come the end of October if they did.
Looked like the county was there maybe today or yesterday doing some, I don't know, maybe water sewer cookups and stuff.
That's correct. Yeah, they're looking, we're looking after some water and sewer connections, exactly.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
And if you haven't seen it yet, I know yesterday, we posted on the village's Facebook page some pictures, some inside pictures of the community center. So I encourage everyone to go on the Facebook page and check out the pictures to get a sneak peek of it. Okay?
Pictures of Jeff Batten getting ready to dunk the ball at the basketball.
Okay, we'll move on to Transparent Operations. That's the next IAP we had planned for the year. That is the IAP that we did complete this year. That was the performance dashboards on our website. So we developed the dashboards using Quick Score and the village's website, and these dashboards went live on the website and were announced using our communication tools on May 17. The number of website hits for the dashboard information, we plan to track in the future. That's not something we've ever tracked before, but just using our data analytics site, we were able to see the number that we had for May and June was 66 people visited that site. We'll continue to promote that going forward, link that in different places that we send out for communications as well. The Planning and Inspections Process Improvements IAP is in progress and on schedule. Again, we mentioned that was a one-year IAP that we all have determined would move forward into 2020, just due to the software delays that we experienced this year. The software implementation was the highest priority for this IAP, and it was implemented by June 30. Staff also completed the file organization recommendation in the department, and other recommendations were not completed due to the delay of the software, but like I said, it will carry forward. The average number of days to issue single-family permits did achieve our targeted goal of eight, so we were just below that with 7.92. Staff anticipates that number two continue to drop once this is fully implemented with the, you know, with the new software and that more folks are used to going on there and using that, and we'll continue monitoring that number. The next IAP is the Baldridge Excellence Framework IAP. This is to continue using the business model of Baldridge to ensure our systematic processes that deliver exceptional results, and then also submitting a national application award in FY 2020. So we continue to work on this. We are in progress. We are not on schedule, but we are in progress with this. Staff ended up drafting the organizational profile, which scopes out who we are. It's our, who we are and what we do as an organization. We did complete the profile, and we held five Baldridge Senior Leadership Team meetings and documented our approach, deployment, learning, and integration for the criteria in the leadership and the strategy categories, all in Q4. So we knew, we really were starting those meetings in Q4 and really going at that consistently with our senior leadership team. Those have continued on and plan to continue on, really every two weeks is what we've been doing as a senior leadership team, to continue working on this, so that ultimately we still plan to achieve the goal to apply for the national award in April of 2020.
Let me jump in here as well. I think this has been really, really beneficial to us. As Lauren mentioned, we are, we are developing this application as a group effort amongst the senior staff, and although we have been pursuing this Baldridge framework, Excellence Framework, for a number of years, this is the first time we have all of the village's senior staff fully engaged in this concept. And as we go through this chapter by chapter and contemplate the questions that the framework is asking us, every meeting, we come out of every meeting with strong recommendations or opportunities for improvement that we collectively identify that can make us a better organization, because we're all in the, we're all contemplating those important questions together, and I think, you know, in the long run, this is, this is going to pay huge dividends.
I agree.
It's been a great process.
Bang for the buck, as Jack would say.
It's been a great process, and I think although we didn't hit the task list target deadlines that we had set out to do, we've ensured that, you know, we're continuing to hit those internal deadlines in order to achieve, you know, continue having these meetings, these rich, this rich dialogue with our senior leaders and implementing change as we see fit and making sure we do that in a timely manner. We had two metrics for this one that we have been tracking this year. The first is the one we did not meet, and that was the actual percent of sections of the application drafted. We did take a different approach with drafting that application this year. It's not a just drafted and go. We're really bringing our senior leadership, leadership team along with us along this journey. And so it slowed us down a little bit with the drafting of the language, but we're getting there, and I think we'll have a rich, a richer process with this. We had a percent of quarterly leadership retreats held according to schedule, and we did achieve those at 100%. Then the last IAP we had this fiscal year was our Workforce Learning and Development IAP. This is to continue assessing our workforce capabilities, succession planning, and the development of workforce skills and abilities through our TOPS training and other external programs. And at the end of Q4, this was in progress but not on schedule, but we did take significant strides with this IAP probably over the last two quarters of the fiscal year, with really focusing in on what we need to accomplish with this. In Q4, the implementation of the new learning and development system began. Supervisors and department heads held succession planning meetings with their staff, and senior leaders identified courses for the revised TOPS Training Program. TOPS is our Training of Pinehurst Staff Internal Training Program. And this is the first time that we've really, we've looked at this holistically. We aligned our succession planning efforts with our training needs of employees as well as our budget request, and we mapped these out on a calendar to see how we can align these a little bit better in order to ultimately feed the budget so that we can have the funds in place and the plan in place to develop our employees. And so we really got that rolling this year. HR held a TOPS Training Class to help employees develop their own individual training plans. And the items that were not on schedule included our training software. We had plans to implement a training software this year, but we had a few other competing priorities with software implementation this year, and so that will continue on into 2020. It's still on the list. And then we are a little behind, but we're rolling out very soon the new TOPS Training Plan Program, and also making sure our INPERFORM goals, which is our Performance Evaluation System, that's all done online, that our INPERFORM goals are approved by the supervisors in an anticipated timeframe that we were hoping for. So we'll keep moving forward with that one into FY 2020. The performance metric for that is the percent of vacancies filled with internal candidates, and we were, we achieved 32% instead of the 35% goal. Similar to the Parks and Recreation metric, the goal was 35%. Our red flag for this is 25%, so this would show up as yellow if we were looking at red, yellow, and green. This is the conclusion of my presentation. Do any of you have questions about this report?
Any questions for Lauren?
No, I just was, we talked about tracking the efficiencies on that Baldridge framework, you know, I think the direct benefits to the public. Is that, is that able to be done? Because it seems like there's an incredible lot of efficiencies and cost savings and...
Ultimately, it will, it will show in the various metrics that we, that we track annually improving.
annually, improving. So, it's a process.
Well, I know, just it's real valuable, and I thought there might be a way to quantify it, that's all.
We're able to go back with all of our performance metrics to, all the way to 2012, when we really started the journey, and see the improvements and efficiencies that were made.
You can see the past, the history of it.
Absolutely. Quantifiably, I mean, I think we, we started collecting some data a while back on birdie improvements and the cost savings that those have made, and have started consolidating that information as well. So, we do have some, some of those quantifiable results as well.
Thank you.
I think the organizational efficiency comes where, I think the mindset, Jeff, and the rest of the staff is that what we'd like to achieve is continuous process improvement. And if there's a way to, a tool to help us do that, I think the Baldridge, the Baldridge approach is one way where we can work to achieve that continuous process improvement to, for efficiency and effectiveness of our staff.
Absolutely. And continue to instill our, we have a core value of improvement within our workforce here. And so, that's something that we continue to strive to embody improvement every day in all that we do.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Lauren, I'm, there's a, having watched this process now for X number of years, there's an initial question as to what does this mean to me, you know, as a citizen? But having seen it a little bit more in-depth, I can, I'm confident that these, some of these that may appear to be just totally internal, actually end up providing efficiency and effectiveness to the services that we deliver to the population. So, they may seem obscure, but they actually translate into service delivery. The second observation I have is, and this goes back many, many years of project management, is every project is estimated to complete on time, and every, every project goes at least 10 to 25% over. So, maybe we ought to start thinking about that. The, the third observation is that for anyone that's been following the comprehensive plan, either in the paper or following it in the meetings, there's a huge number of potential projects that could translate to IAPs in the future. And I'm expecting that this list is going to have to be very carefully
Called.
Called, you know, and managed. So, I suspect you have a little bit of a challenge coming forward here over the next few years.
I think so. I think, I think we all will. And that's, you know, we've had that conversation even in our senior leadership team meetings, when we look at the Baldridge Framework. They ask, how do you, how do you align your long-term strategy with your short-term strategy? And that brought about some very rich conversation of how we will ensure that we're keeping our eye on those big projects that may be coming up from the comp plan, and embedding them within our five-year strategic operating plan as well.
There'll be plenty to do for you in the future.
I think so.
I think so. Thank you, Lauren. You do such a good job. Okay, next, I think we're going to have Brooke talk about a budget amendment.
Give it a shot. Let's see. All right. This is a very routine item that we bring to you each year. And this item will be rolling forward funds from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2020, for three different categories of items. So, the first are projects that were started in fiscal year 2019, but were not able to be completed by June 30th. The second category are items and projects that were not completed, or, excuse me, were not started at all, due to design delays or a variety of other challenges. And the third category are some of our restricted funds. Sometimes we receive donations from individuals or organizations that have to be used for a particular purpose. So, those funds have to be rolled forward so that we can spend them as they were intended. And also, we have federally and state restricted funds also, that we receive that have to be spent in a specific way. So, we are requesting to roll those forwards, so they can be spent in that manner. All of these appropriations for these items will lapse at June 30th, and basically add to our fund balance at the end of the year. So, what this amendment will do is go back into fund balance and reappropriate those funds in the current fiscal year, so that they can be used as they were originally intended in the prior budget. We have a list of items for your review and consideration in front of you. The total amount of $248,449 is a little below the five-year average, if you exclude the $600,000 fire engine two years ago that was rolled forward. Excluding that item, the average is around $340,000. And so, our departments have done an excellent job getting projects completed this year. It's been a very busy year, but a lot has been accomplished during this time. So, I will mention three of the top projects, and if you have any specific questions about any of the other items, I'll be happy to answer those. You'll notice two police vehicles on the list. Those were ordered by June 30th, but due to some delays with the dealership. They just couldn't get here in time. Spoke with the chief, and he said that we planned to get those by early September. So, hopefully, they'll be in soon. The NC DOT railway crossing improvement, this is a roll forward again. That, that one's coordinated by the DOT, so some, hopefully, that will be completed in 2020.
If you recall, we put that in the budget last year to be ready to do that project when NC DOT allowed us to do it, fully expecting that there might be, it might wind up being rolled forward.
Is that the crossing at St. Andrews?
Yes.
Okay.
And do we think it will happen this year?
I think so. Jeff?
Batten has some, an update.
Believe it will. There is a temporary power meter that has been set there in the last few days, so I'm suspecting that is part of that project.
Does the railroad give us, or the DOT give us any advance warning on that kind of thing? It's a pretty significant road.
Yeah, they will. Yeah. Between DOT and the railroad, we've been in past, in contact with this whole concept, but...
Let the community know, because a lot of people use that road.
Absolutely. It is very much a major entrance and exit, as you point out.
Thank you.
Okay. The third large item on the list would be the remainder of the comprehensive plan. As you know, that's well underway, and we're just rolling forward the remainder of that contract. You may also notice the community center. Nothing related to the community center is on this list, and that is, just as a reminder, that is because they're housed in the Capital Project Fund, which has a project budget which will remain intact until the completion of the project. So, those appropriations do not lapse on June 30th, like the general fund does. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about any of the other items.
We don't do any prepay to spend the money before the end of the fiscal year. Is that correct?
For projects in general, or?
For any item in particular. Until it's delivered, we never really pay for something until we've received delivery of the service and/or product. Is that right?
Correct. And if we did prepay for it, it would sit on the balance sheet as an asset anyway, because we don't have the item. So, it wouldn't hit the expenditure account, and we would still have to
Okay.
Request a budget amendment. Sure.
A question about two of the, these unspent equitable sharing funds, and the unspent newly donated funds from the fire department and the police department. Could you just elaborate on what those are?
Sure. The equitable sharing funds for the police department, that's related to proceeds from the liquidation of seized assets, so things that they have acquired through their investigations. It goes through the federal government, and they have some kind of liquidation process, and we get some proceeds back from that.
And an earmark for special, special purposes, and it's, every year, a portion of those get rolled forward.
That's right. Anything that's unspent, and they are very restricted in how they can be spent. It has to be, you know, something related to police. It can't be something that was already in our budget. It has to be additional expenditures, things like that. Exactly. For the fire, talking about the restricted donations and newly donated funds, that's primarily donations for Annabelle, the old fire truck, antique fire truck that we have. Typically, people make donations for that throughout the year. That's what it's for.
Called Annabelle. I'm glad to know that.
Any other questions for Brooke?
No, she answered mine previously.
Okay, great.
I moved to approve ordinance 1914, reappropriating funds from the FY 2019 budget to the FY 2020 budget.
Second?
Nope, Jack.
We have a motion by Judy Davis and a second by Jack Farrell. Is there any additional discussion? If not, let's vote. Are those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Beth, thank you, Brooke.
Thank you, Brooke.
Appreciate you. Okay, number 11. I think Ms. Angie's coming.
Angie, and I guess I'll make some introductory comments on this. I think, I know all the council knows, and probably a lot of the public knows, that every, every year, we undertake a study to ensure that our pay and classification plan remains accurate and relevant and competitive in the market. And every year, in that study, we endeavor to have a third of our positions studied, such that every three years, each of our positions gets a thorough review. And Angie is going to present our, my recommendation to the council on what changes to make to our pay and classification plan as a result of that study and management's review of that study.
Yes. So, thank you for allowing me to be here today to talk about this, this topic. It's always fun. So, we contracted again with the MAPS Group this year to do a review of administration, financial services, fire, human resources, parks and rec, as well as our administrative support positions that are across several different departments. We do those at the same time, because they're all very similar in, in, in job duty. So, when they come in, they actually interview our staff for the positions selected. They review position questionnaires that employees have completed, and supervisors and department heads have reviewed. They also then, the MAPS Group also interviews supervisors and department heads and managers to confirm what employees have said, and then add information if employees have, have neglected to talk about some of their, their duties. We started this in February. It is a pretty lengthy process, depending on how many people they have to interview, and how many, how much salary data they have to gather, that sort of thing. So, throughout this process, we have, we have come now with some recommendations based on what the MAPS Group provided to us. And I want to talk through the bullet points and the memo that I gave you, and elaborate on a few of those that, that I think maybe need just a little bit more information, a little more clarification. So, to begin with, our customer service representative, this is our front desk position. We, we're recommending that that position move from a grade 13 to a grade 14. It's a little bit different than positions in other communities. We have some of our planning function in that position, and we also have some of our parks and rec function, which we'll be moving, moving out. And we took that into, because it'll be going to the community center. So, we took that into consideration when we made this recommendation. The communications specialist position, we are recommending that move from a grade 21 to a grade 22, and change the status from non-exempt to exempt. I'm going to elaborate a little bit on exempt and non-exempt. I'm not sure what you know about exempt and non-exempt. It's a, it's a standard from the Department of Labor, and exempt, an exempt employee or an exempt position means that you do not get paid overtime. And really, you're not subject to the minimum wage either, but predominantly, it's about the overtime piece. Majority of our staff is non-exempt, which means anytime they work over 40 hours, they would get paid time and a half, or earn time and a half in comp time. The nature of her position indicates that she should be classified as exempt. There's a very specific checklist that the Department of Labor provides, and you have to meet all the requirements of one of four categories in order to be qualified as exempt. The Department of Labor does not want people to be exempt unless they truly, truly are exempt. So, we would be making that move, or recommending that move for the communications specialist. We've got a few others a little down the list, and I'll elaborate on those a little more when we get there.
Angie, let me just interrupt.
Yes, ma'am.
So, in the old days, when I was working, exempt was really either you had a supervisory role, and you managed other people, or you had a decision-making role. Is that still pretty much?
It's, it's very similar, and I've got the specifics of that. You have to earn a certain salary level, which is very low. It's about $23,000, and, and the Department of Labor is wanting to change that. They're actually wanting to move that up about, to about $35,000. Hasn't happened yet, but they're trying to do that. So, you have to earn a minimum salary. You also have to have a management, a management responsibility. You have to supervise, in this particular category, the executive category, you have to supervise at least two people. And then, you have to, to have some decision-making, a power for hiring and firing, or making that recommendation. There are also other exemptions. You can have an administrative exemption, where you have control, or your purview expands over an, an organization. So, for instance, in an HR capacity, if you're an HR generalist, you, your responsibility level actually is, is company or organization-wide, and, and you're making decisions, or making recommendations about certain things that impact the entire organization of significance, like hiring, recommending hiring. So, and then, of course, you have a computer exemption and a professional exemption. Professionals are going to be your, your engineers, your accountants, your lawyers, your doctors, because this expands over private sector as well. And so, all right. So, we also want to make a recommendation to change the title for the Performance Management Director to Organizational Performance Director.
I hope that makes everybody happy.
Well, it's, it's twofold, really. When Lauren is here, people confuse her for being in the HR department. I think she wants to stay as far away from that as she possibly can. But it, it made more sense. It, I think it defines her role a little bit better. We want to move the Human Resources Assistant from a pay grade 13 to a pay grade 15. Now, we typically don't jump a couple of pay grades. In this particular case, the duties are very similar to the administrative assistants in other departments. The level of responsibility is the same. When we initially brought this position onboard a few years ago, it was not as complex. It didn't have, it didn't have the same level of responsibility that the other positions do, but it does at this point. So, we would like to move that one up as well. Move the Human Resources Director from a pay grade 30 to a pay grade 31. Change the title for the Building Inspector to Building Inspector Level 3. And the next two bullets are to add a Level 1 and a Level 2 Building Inspector as well. In the Strategic Operating Plan, we actually requested an additional inspector, and we wanted to just add these two levels, in, in order to capture maybe hiring someone at a more entry level, because we, we do have inspectors who are close to retirement. We don't know when that's going to happen, but we want to be prepared when that does. We want to change the title for the Administrative Assistant in Planning Inspections to an Administrative Specialist, and move from pay grade 15 to pay grade 16. The Planning and Inspections Administrative Assistant is a little bit more complex than Administrative Assistant in other, in other departments. It's very similar to the clerk job. Not quite as, not quite as intense, but it's very similar deadlines, legal requirements, and, and those type of things. So, we figured that it was just more suited, that it would be Administrative Specialist level, and one pay grade higher than the other administrative assistants. We want to change the title for the Public Services Director to Public Services and Engineering Director. In this position, we're also recommending move a couple of pay grades from pay grade 30 to pay grade 32. We've added significant responsibilities to this job with the engineering function. With, with Mike coming aboard, he had that skillset. We contracted that out, ironically, to Mike's group. We hired him away. We were fortunate enough to hire him away. But with this change, we're also able to reduce our engineering contract. We were able to cut it by about two-thirds. So, that, that makes up that difference, and, and he'll be able to perform some of those functions. But he can't do everything because that becomes a capacity problem. So, we'll only put...
Angie, then on a general level, some of these pay grade changes actually involve additional responsibilities. Is that correct?
Some of them do.
Or the expectation of additional... Or the expectation of additional responsibilities?
Some of them do.
It's a reflection of the, of the additional responsibilities that we, that were already present, though.
Okay. According to definition, the way they're defined, right?
That's right, yeah. In some cases, there, there had been changes in the way we delegate work across the organization that has resulted in changes over time. For example, I'll, I'll use Melissa's job as an example. That was a new job that we created a couple of years ago, and we had some notions about what her responsibilities were, were going to be, but we wound, wound up using her even more extensively. And so, that's why there's, there's a change there. There's not a, I don't think there's a case in, in any, any of these where we have said we want to move, we want to add requirements, except for Mike's, the engineering requirement.
Except for Mike.
We want to add requirements, and therefore it just, justifies a different pay grade.
So, the next, I think, four, four positions are all in parks and recreation. It's the athletic coordinator, the program coordinator, the special events coordinator, and the fair barn coordinator. I want to speak first about their, their status. It has been recommended, and, and we agree with this assessment, that these employees, the positions would move from exempt to non-exempt. And one of the reasons for that is when we go through the requirements from the Department of Labor, they do not meet all the requirements that are there.
Exempt.
To be exempt.
Okay.
Correct. Really, the, the piece that, that was really highlighted was the fact that they don't supervise two people. I know they supervise a lot of part-time people, but their hours are not equivalent to two full-time, full-time folks. So, we, we put them back to non-exempt. And it would be our responsibility to manage their, to manage their time. And they do a good job of that. So, we, the athletic coordinator, we would like to move from pay grade 19 to pay grade 20. The program coordinator, the same, from 19 to 20. The fair barn coordinator from 17 to 18. Now, we have a special events coordinator listed here. I actually sent you an addendum this morning, and I apologize. I know you are in interviews all day, and you may or may not have had an opportunity to read those. But we did, after talking with Mark Wagner and Jeff Batten, we felt that this particular position was on the same level with the athletic and program coordinator positions. We did a little bit more research. The consultant wasn't able to find similar positions. She really struggled, and she indicated that in her report. So, we, we went out, Mark did, to some of his listservs, his listserv, and he was able to pull some examples from four other municipalities, or three municipalities in one county. A couple of those, being Huntersville and Rocky Mount, are significantly larger than we are. They're in the fif, I think, mid-50s to 60,000 population. Carboro is about 21. They're one of our comparables. And then Davie County, they're about 50,000, 47, 50,000, and they don't have the breadth of events that we do here. As, if you went to the one Friday night, live after five. So, we do, we do several of those. We now have the Holly Arts Festival. But based on the information we were able to find, we, we feel that the special events coordinator also needs to move from a 19 to a 20, very, very similar to the other two positions there.
The, and the evidence is kind of scant, but we're basing this off Carboro. And what, what we did, since we only had one true comparable on this job, was then we, we looked at how the long list of our other positions compare to Carboro. And it's almost like, like they're copying us, or we're copying them. We're almost one-for-one matches across the board.
Very close. Right.
Thought it was appropriate to make our events coordinator comparable to theirs.
Right. We, we also would recommend that the parks and rec director move from a grade 30 to a grade 31. After talking with the consultant about this particular position, our parks and rec director covers a lot more territory than most parks and rec directors: harness track, fair barn, buildings and grounds, and parks and rec. So, it's a, it's a pretty vast, vast area that he, that he covers, more so than, than a lot of other places.
Think we added some things.
Yeah, yeah.
Couple of months.
Yeah. So, we had a, we had a GIS analyst that was approved in the strategic operating plan, and we want to just formally add that to pay grade 25. And then the next couple of bullets are related to restructures in departments. They are not additions to head count. They are just adding these positions to the pay grade in order to give opportunities for development and growth for our current staff, keeping in line, you know, succession, keeping in mind succession planning and heading down that road. We want to add three positions: an assistant grounds crew leader, an assistant infrastructure crew leader, and a track crew leader to pay grade 14. And we want to add two positions: an assistant solid waste superintendent and a buildings and grounds crew leader to pay grade 16. So, those are all the particular changes that we want to recommend for our pay scale. We also bring the policy forward as well during this time, and we're recommending one clarification on page two of the policy. In the section where we talk about our cost of living increase, we, we've got a section where we say that all employees may receive the cost of living increase as outlined in the policy. And we would like to add the village manager to that list as well, that he would, he would also receive that. I think the last two years, I've had to come to you separately in, in order to get approval and permission to, to modify that pay for him, and we want to include that in the policy. So, that particular piece, we can, we can go ahead and, and put through. We also want to continue to offer merit pay to employees on a zero to 3% scale. Now, our budget will be 2%. So, our average will be, will be 2%. So, if someone gets over 2%, somebody else is probably going to get less than 2%. So, I wanted to be, wanted to be clear about that, make sure I high explain, explain that thoroughly to you. I did provide an updated pay scale for you this morning to include the special events coordinator. So, I think that's it. Have I missed anything? Any questions?
Go ahead, Jeff.
I'm sorry. The two positions and three positions that are added, they're just anticipation of a future hire? Is that right, or?
It, it would really be a, a potential promotion opportunity for our current staff, and then if they were to leave, then yes, we would.
Okay, but, but it's not like we're putting them in place, these positions in place in the HR plan.
Not, not added to head count. We're taking an existing head count and changing a title.
Correct.
We're not going to hire into them. We're going to let them be the, a growth in-
That's right.
Correct.
Position. The second question would be related to the effect upon our salary line in our plan, fiscal year 2020 plan. Can you comment on that?
Sure. I can, I can give you some information on that. A lot of these positions will involve no pay changes. How our policy is written, if, if, if a position is upgraded one grade, they would get a, a 5% bump in pay if their current, if their current salary is below the midpoint of the new grade. They would get 5% or up to the midpoint.
And I assume you've done the analysis to see what effect this was all going to have on our fiscal year salary budget?
I have. And I did budget. I did, I do budget for this every year, what I think it, it may come up to be. So, I've budgeted for that, and then the numbers that I've come up with are less than half of what I budgeted for.
Okay. So, you anticipated this in the budgeted number?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Whenever I have fire, police in there, and, and public services, I always anticipate that there may be some significant changes there.
Thank you.
And just to clarify a point for everybody, the, the analysis that you did this year was for just a few departments, because you, over a three-year period, you look at every, like one-third of the population?
Correct. All positions are looked at at least once every three years. If they have a change in their responsibility level, we may look at them more frequently, but, but typically, we will look at a position every three years. For example, the HR director position was looked at this year. You will not see that for another three years, unless something significant is added. Right.
And so, back to the, the cost of living adjustment. So, the language here is that employees, including the village manager, may also receive. So, how do we adjudicate that? Is that on a per-person basis, an individual basis, or is it across the board?
So, if I understand your question, the way, the way the policy reads is if, if an employee was hired prior to December 31st, then they will receive the COLA increase on July 1st of the following year, the beginning of the next fiscal year. And the COLA increase is based on the average COLA for the previous year. So, the COLAs that went into place July 1st this year were based on the average COLA through December 31st of 2018. So, folks hired from January to June will not get a COLA.
So, it's automatic for everybody who qualifies?
Yes, ma'am.
It says may, but-
Yeah, it says, right.
And the reason it says may is because there may not be an increase. It could, but COLA could be zero, and I don't want to say you will get one.
We reserve flexibility for you if we wind up in a bunch of crunch for some reason.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Angie? Okay, I think we probably need a motion.
I move to approve resolution 1915 amending the policy on the administration of the position classification and pay plan for the village of Pinehurst.
I second that.
We have a motion by Judy Davis and a second by Kevin Drum. Is there any further discussion? If not, let's vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no. Thank you very much. That's unanimous, Beth. Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
We appreciate you doing this for us every year.
Thank you, Angie.
Thanks, Angie.
Big job. Okay, next, I see Jeff moving up here about abandoning a right-of-way.
We've had some discussions about this previously. This is a resolution of intent to abandon Dinocello Court, and that's what's before you tonight. This action would not officially abandon Dinocello Court. It is the first step of a multi-step process spelled out in general statutes that we have to follow if we are going to ultimately abandon that particular right-of-way. Dinocello Court is a paper street, and it is located off of Diamond Head, and it actually serves as the entrance into the beach club or marina, whichever one you'd like, whatever term you like to use. And I apologize, this map is going to be sideways, but nonetheless, you hopefully can at least tell generally what we're talking about. All right. So, in, in general, Dinocello Court was dedicated to the village of Pinehurst in-
Thank you.
2000, excuse me, 1990, 1984. I'll get to it eventually. And the road was never developed. And as you can see on this survey map, there are no lots around it. It's only surrounded by the, again, the property that is actually owned by the current Pinehurst LLC. The abandonment of the right-of-way would place it back on the taxable scrolls. The state statutes would dictate that the property be divided equally among the adjacent property owners. In this case, Pinehurst LLC is the only property owner. So, ownership of this would ultimately revert to them if we abandoned it. And again, it would become a taxable parcel. Tonight, this resolution of intent, again, just starts the ball rolling. We then have to go through four weeks of legal ads of our intent. There would be a public hearing after that, and then ordinance for your consideration. We also have to take the step of formally notifying the adjacent property owners of, of the village's intent. So, if this is, again, a step that we want to proceed on, then we would ask that you consider approving the resolution of intent to abandon, with the idea that we probably would come back in September with an ordinance. And at that point, we would make official the date of abandonment, if you so act on it at that time.
Okay, we have seen this before, just in concept. Any questions for Jeff about this? Okay.
I move to approve resolution 1917 declaring the intent of village council to abandon the right-of-way of Dinocello Court.
Second that.
We have a motion by Judy Davis and a second by Kevin Drum. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no. Thank you all. That's unanimous, Beth. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, next, oh my gosh. Anybody have any other business to come for the council? Any council members? Other business? Okay, then we will move to comments from attendees. Yes, sir.
Next time I come, I will wear a jacket.
No, no, no. Oh, it's cold.
No, it's cold.
It's cold, okay. I was going to tell you the preacher had on shorts. Your name and your address, please.
My name is Brad Cots, and I live at 6 Hampshire Lane in Pinehurst Number 6. I have been a resident of Pinehurst twice. We moved here in 2000, and we're here for a couple of years. Moved, been up for 15 years, at which time we still kept our house here, and then moved back about four years ago. So, six years out of the last 20, I've been here, as well as we came back at least twice a year, play golf, see friends, keep social networking intact, and walk the house and make sure it's still standing and in good shape. So, it's not like we lost contact. Actually, we were very lucky in coming back this, this go-around, that we fell right back into the Pinehurst mode, and have been very happy since. But needless to say, we've seen a lot of changes in 19 years. You could almost call it like before bonefish and after bonefish, or somewhere along those lines.
That's a good way to say it.
So, a lot of changes. And you guys have been really tasked with managing the growth that we've seen, particularly Number 6. But I don't want to make this a Number 6, or a Village Acres, or a Linden Road, or whatever issue, because I believe that the issue that I wanted to talk about actually is part of the growth of Pinehurst all the way across the village. And that is, who's coming to Pinehurst? People that are coming to Pinehurst fall into actually two categories: retirees, and those people that are doing the services required to keep the, the village coming. They're coming for jobs, and they're not coming internally. They're coming from other parts of the state, other states, pavers, roofers, bridge makers, masonry, the whole, the whole gamut. So, then you have to ask yourself, these people are coming from someplace other than Pinehurst, generally saying, do they come with the same values and the same visions that Pinehurst had in 2000, 2005, 2010? I think the answer is no, not necessarily. They're younger, smarter, more fluent, and definitely move around a lot. So, they are different than the people that maybe had the original visions of Pinehurst. And you say to yourself, well, is that okay? Is that acceptable? Yes, it is, because we, we learn, we grow, we move, okay? But sometimes, they bring cultures, traditions, and ways of life that are not consistent with Pinehurst and the Pinehurst vision that we all know and love, okay? Because it is a village. It's not a city. It's not a town. It's a village.
Let me just mention that you can call yourself a peanut butter. I mean, you just pick village, town, city. There's no size requirement, but go on, please.
So, as we look at where we're going, where we've been, and where we want to get to, would it surprise you that there are no ordinances, laws, or any other enforceable covenant that prevents someone- that prevents someone from parking a 2.5-ton pickup truck in their front yard any day, anytime, for any length of time? Would that surprise you? I think it surprises a lot of people. Yes, Nancy?
I was just going to ask Jeff, is your truck a 2.5-ton pickup truck?
No.
No. I mean, that's the biggest truck I know, but it's garaged. What do you mean by a 2.5-ton pickup truck?
A pickup truck, a car, any vehicle that is not in a driveway.
Oh, you need to...
So you go through almost any subdivision here in Pinehurst, and I would guess that there is roughly 10% of those lots, or those homes, have got at least one vehicle in the driveway, and at least one vehicle sitting in the front lawn, on the pine straw, in the grass, whatever. I don't think this is the vision of Pinehurst. And what has happened is that you have single-family dwellings, and mom's got a car, dad's got a car, kid's got a car, and oh yeah, dad's a bricklayer, and so he's got a van. And all of a sudden, you've got five vehicles in a single-family dwelling with a standard How do you manage that? Because I've got news for you. If you drive through and you start seeing it, and become aware of it, I think that you would be on the same side that I am. This is not Pinehurst, and that's not what I bought into in 2000, or that I've continued to live in through 2019. I don't believe it's consistent with our vision and the task that we've given you to help manage our growth, to continue the traditions of Pinehurst. So I ask you, is this your vision of Pinehurst? That's my point. I'm asking for an ordinance that talks about not when you turn around and have a bridge party, or a backyard barbecue, and people have to park along the side of the road. I'm asking about residents, renters and owners, parking not in the driveway, but in their front yard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brad.
I'd ask for any comments from you all?
Well, sometimes when something hits us like this, we have a little research to do, a little thinking to do.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from attendees? Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the village council. Before I begin my remarks this afternoon, I wish to restate unequivocally that they have nothing to do with faith, morals, doctrine, or the Bible. This is strictly a land use issue. The Community Presbyterian Church continues to violate Chapter 9 of the Pinehurst Development Ordinance every Sunday. Illegal parking continues to occur on the old site of the Wee School off Fields Road, and illegal parking creep also occurs on the site of the Genissoff property on Everett And adjacent to 35 Kelly Road, this is new. Meanwhile, the number of Sunday services remain reduced, from two to one, which only serves to exacerbate any parking problem which may exist. Although the village manager, the planning inspections director, all members of the village council, and Mr. Sinclair, the pilot, have been informed repeatedly of these continuing parking violations, all have remained unresponsive, ignoring the fact that these continuing violations have even occurred. It appears that if a violation occurs which involves this church, and it is not mentioned, then it has not occurred. This travesty has gone on long enough. Two facts highlight the concerns of our neighborhood, which surrounds the church property, is located in the historic district, and is and always has been an integral part of Old Town Pinehurst. Fact number one. It is apparent that the village council and staff refuse to enforce Chapter 9 of the PDO when dealing with this church. In particular, Chapter 9.4.1.1E on page 110 of the Pinehurst Development Ordinance, which states, and I quote, "All parking areas required under this section shall be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the use or uses which they This describes a Wee School site, which the church uses for parking every Sunday and periodically during the week. Fact number two, since the site plans and landscape plans have not been approved by the village, how and why did the tree-cutting massacre occur? Who gave this church permission to basically clearcut the Community Presbyterian Church properties? Let me restate fact number one. The illegal church parking has mainly occurred on the Wee School property off Fields Road. This area was already cleared. Therefore, I believe that the tree-cutting was entirely unnecessary and definitely premature. This lack of proper enforcement will set a dangerous precedent for the future between the village and development applicants. As I mentioned previously, the church's improvement project has been shady from the start. The PDO, as written, prevented them from these renovations for a variety of reasons. So they resorted to a conditional zoning approach, which in effect permits a spot rezoning at an applicant's whim. A majority of the village council members at this time were known enthusiastic members of the congregation. Whether they recused themselves, they voted anyway. The results are for all to see. This shadiness is continuing into the review process itself. The church refuses to follow the PDO as required, illegally parking and apparently clearcutting its property without permission. Who can trust them as regards stormwater management, shared parking with Pinehurst Elementary, the use of pervious pavers to reduce flooding, or even required buffers or landscape designs? In stark contrast, the Catholic church on Dundee Road, which was the first church to use a conditional zoning approach to increase parking for their congregation, obeyed Chapter 9 of the PDO to the letter. The new parking area was immediately roped off to prevent any parking until all inspections and reviews were completed, including the red cockaded woodpecker. All grading, paving, striping, and landscaping were completed and passed by the village and all other agencies. Only then was a new parking lot for handicapped members open for use. In addition, parking on the village right-of-way is not only discouraged, but enforced. I continue to believe that this spiteful, unnecessary desecration of the Community Presbyterian Church sanctuary properties has breached the agreement reached between the Community Presbyterian Church, the village, and our neighborhood. My wife and have been taxpaying residents of Old Town Pinehurst since 1991. Since my retirement in 2000, I have attended most meetings of the Planning and Zoning Board, the Pinehurst Historic Preservation Commission, and our village council. As a concerned citizen, I believe that my questions deserve to be answered. This situation must not be allowed to continue. The requirements of the PDO must be enforced on all parties equally. No one should be exempt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Any other comments from attendees? Yes, sir.
What's his name?
John Webster.
How do you remember all these names?
Haven't confused me with Bob Coats today.
I know. I mean, I tend to, I asked Judy this time.
Bob Coats is over there.
He is? Oh, he's sitting behind somebody.
Behind Tom.
Damn.
So I've sent the council yesterday something, and I don't propose to read it to you. It's four pages long. But I think for the record, I'd like to cover at least what's in the executive summary.
I think you're up late, because I thought you sent it to us at 11 o'clock last night.
Oh, I'm always worried about what goes on in the council, you know?
Thank you.
Appreciate your concern.
My initial points are, there are some underlying assumptions in this planning process, which I think are faulty, and there's one which I think is critical. The first one is that the demographics, again and again we keep hearing, are changing in Pinehurst. The statistics don't seem to hold that up. The 60-plus age group remains relatively constant. So I don't think that's going to change, and I don't think a bulging boomer retirement, if anything, is going to increase that group. So this, we cannot point to changing demographics as a reason for this plan. The second one, I think, and which is the critical assumption, is the expected number in new residents in Pinehurst in the next 10 years. And the number in the plan is 6,900. That is a 41% increase in 10 years, and that does not conform to what has been happening in the past, and it doesn't even conform to what's in your five-year strategic plan. So taking the past six years and the next four years of the operating plan, or the strategic plan, that works out at just under 21%. And if we go back 20 years, the average has been 15. So I think that instead of 6,900 new residents, it's probably going to be more like 3,000 to 3,500. And it's a guess, obviously, but I think in view of what has happened in the past, and the fact that the growth rate is actually slowing down in the last few years, and we're going into an economic cycle which I think is not going to be booming in the next few years, I think to assume that we're going to have 6,900 residents, new residents in the next 10 years, is not credible, unless there is a pro-growth emphasis. And that's what I would like to understand, because I think the residents of this town are telling you, we do not want that. So if that is the emphasis of this plan, be honest about it. Say it. We want to fill this place with people, because we want to maximize the tax revenue. So that's my second point. In looking at this, I also see that there is a trend whereby we're adding residents who don't meet the average in terms of the property and vehicle asset base. That in itself is not bad, but it does mean that what we're doing is adding people who produce less taxes.
Would you say that again? We're adding residents who don't meet...
We're adding residents who have a lower tax base. So as we progress...
Based on the assets that...
Yeah, because we're taxing their assets.
I have a problem with that. I have a problem with that, and I have a problem with, we, these people don't have Pinehurst values if they park cars.
I'm sorry, I have nothing to do with the previous comment.
I know, that was another comment. We are not, we're not one big gated community, and we can't pick and choose people who come and live here.
It's an economic argument I'm talking about.
Okay, thank you.
It's not a value judgment, it's not, I'm not trying to say that there has to be only one socioeconomic group here. I am saying that from an economic point of view, and this has an impact on our taxes and on our services.
Then from that economic point of view, what can we do about it? Not let them come here?
Yeah. My suggestion is, instead of being pro-growth, it's being against growth.
So who's going to buy your house when you're ready to sell it?
I bought it from somebody who left. So somebody will probably replace me. I think there's people who are coming into this community on a regular basis, and others are leaving and dying off and all the rest of it. But what I'm against is taking this community, adding a lot of cheap housing to it, reducing the average asset base of our taxpayers, and this will mean that we will have a lot more people, and we're having to provide services which on the whole tend to be per-capita-based, so which will mean our taxes have to go up. It's as simple as that. That's the economics. The second one is that by building a lot of cheap housing, the value of the existing housing stock is not keeping up with inflation, even in an economic cycle like the one we're in.
Where is this cheap housing you're talking about building?
Happening because...
Where is it?
Where is it? In Pinehurst, obviously. If the average value is dropping, then that's what we're building, cheaper housing.
Where do you live, Mr. Webster?
I live in Old Town. On Matanty Road.
As do I, as do I. There are a lot of little bungalows in Old Town that could certainly be upgraded, but they, their asset value probably doesn't measure up to yours.
What's that got to do with that? They've been here for a long time. I'm talking about the trend.
Okay.
Let him finish.
Okay. My next point is that instead of building out the ETJ, I would like to see this kept as a green belt. If I go back to, let's assume for a moment I'm right about the number of new residents that are coming to town, you know, 3,000 to 3,500. If we just look at the five focus areas that you have looked at, that means business as usual adds up to 2,000 residents. If I take the same number that you have in the plan of 1,400 unbuilt lots, and we have a 2.1 person per lot here, that works out at almost 3,000 people. So there is enough land in Pinehurst without touching the ETJ to accommodate those 3,000 people already.
Do you think no one will ever build in the outskirts of Pinehurst?
Sure they will.
They have, and they are.
They are.
And they think that they live in Pinehurst, and they use our roads, and they use all of our facilities.
So what, so we annex them, and then there will be another group on the end of that? There will always be somebody who lives on the end of Pinehurst.
On the edge.
On the edge of Pinehurst. So what are we going to do? Annex everybody out until we've taken up all of North Carolina?
Well, I think that's a bit of an overstatement, but...
I know, but I mean, it's an exaggeration, of course, but it's an unending process. So anyway, my point would be that a lot of people have shown an interest in protecting our environment, and my point is, I don't think we need to annex that area. I don't, if anything, I think we should be trying to protect it, and I would rather see our investment go into preserving that rural area rather... see our investment go into preserving that rural area, rather than building sewer and roads and so on, which are just going to collapse our roads even more. And I don't have the statistics with me, but I've seen them. Pinehurst has one of the highest densities, population densities, in North Carolina, funnily enough. It has a higher...
North Carolina?
Yeah, it has a higher one, higher one than...
I'm going to disagree with that, but you have looked it up, obviously.
No, I was surprised...
We have very few square miles, maybe that's why.
Yeah, yeah, we have small, but what I mean is, you know, we're such an urban sprawl, such an odious urban sprawl according to this plan, and yet, we have a higher density than the Raleigh-Durham Chapel Hill area.
That's commercial.
Pardon?
We're almost exclusively residential.
Right, yeah, we're almost exclusively residential, that's it.
But, you know, for an odious sprawl, I mean, this is, it's not bad. And then I had one question for you. What is this costing? What is this plan costing, the whole process? Is there a number somebody can give me?
Part of the contract number for the consulting services, is that what you're speaking of?
Just the consulting processes, you know, the meetings, the envision...
200 and something, I don't recall the specific number.
I don't think Judy and I have received an increase on this one here, have we? No.
What are you talking about?
I think, no, he's being facetious. I think the, it's around 200,000.
That's just the consulting?
Yes.
So, if we then add in the events that we've had, and the webpage, and all, okay, so minimum...
I think that's probably all-inclusive, though, don't you think?
Got to be, yes, for sure.
We've had minor incidentals, expenses where we bought supplies for events or stuff like that, it's very minor, though.
And, fine, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from attendees? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
I second that.
We have a motion by Judy and a second by Kevin to adjourn our meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, thank you very much. It's been a long day, everybody.